First of all, approve if we can the draft of the minutes for our last meeting, which was on July 16th. Have, has our quorum reviewed those minutes?
I have.
And.
I have.
Negligent on that, sorry.
I wasn't there.
So.
Welcome back Larry. Have you read, did you read the minutes from the last meeting? I'm trying to get, I find them adequate and Christopher does also. And do I have others who could say that we should move to accept those minutes?
I wasn't there Colton, so.
Kevin would, Kevin would be the third vote. Do you feel comfortable voting Kevin?
I really should read them. I think I might be able to do it before the end of the meeting. Or, I don't know what happens in this case.
Well, I think what happens in this case probably, my sense of this is that we can wait till the next time we get together, which won't be that long, but this is your homework assignment.
Yeah, you just, just table it.
Good, let's hold it then and the planning board, as you know, has by majority, the request has been made by the applicant and I assume everybody's, whether they've read the minutes or not, has read the resolution. Or if not, do you want me to read it?
I've read them both.
I've read it.
If we're all pretty well satisfied with it, but the motion was made for a positive recommendations of zoning board of appeals with conditions for the requested area they're in to exceed the 25% rule for accessory dwelling space. The conditions were that because of the footprint of the original structure is so small, the proposed carriage house cannot reach the minimum amount of living space and has garage space to hide the owner's cars. The proposed site plan makes the new proposed building fit and the size is negligible to view from the street, but it is substantial. And the majority, as I say, as you know, advanced the request to, to us. Now, Brian, is there someone representing the appellant here?
Yes, the applicants are here. Are we ready to let them in?
I think it's appropriate now to open it to them, so then we can get onto the public if it's interested.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
And I've been hoping I would pronounce your last name appropriately. Does it have four syllables?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Govanali.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We've all begun to look at what you're proposed to do with your property there on Oak Street. But would you like to explain to us your, your wishes and your, your plans?
Yes, that would be terrific. May I share my screen? I'm gonna go ahead and. Okay, so.
I guess you can and are.
Is that all right? I just jumped in. Okay, thank you. So, well, thank you very much for having me. My name is Pamela Govanali and I'm also here to present with my architect Christie Ballesi. And just to give you a very quick background, I work for a nonprofit as a director of preservation. I preserve gardens and I'm currently working with Bard College on the rehabilitation of wood gardens. So preserving the character of this schoolhouse and the community is very important to me. And I'm sure that many of you are familiar with this, but I'll just give you a brief background. This schoolhouse was built by Henry Delamater in 1844. And Delamater's home was designed by the renowned architect A.J. Davis. So after he built his mansion, he sent his carpenters up the hill to build the schoolhouse, which I like to think was also designed by A.J. Davis. And Davis also designed another schoolhouse in the area. And the belief is that Davis gave away this land for the school because there's bedrock that's underneath most of it. So it couldn't be farmed, it couldn't, it wasn't usable for much else. And from what I understand, this is also why several developers passed on purchasing this property. From the research that I've done, it is historically accurate to have outbuildings or a barn on the property of a 19th century schoolhouse. And after this was a schoolhouse, it was actually occupied by a blacksmith. And this was also the primary forest between the historic designation for Oak Street that will go through at the end of this year. And as part of my research, I looked, there are some really beautiful carriage houses in Rhinebeck, as you know. So I looked at many of them. Many of them are quite large in the other parts of the village, but obviously the homes are too. And at this time in the 1800s, when many of the houses were built on Oak Street, this was, was almost like low income housing in this area. This is an image that shows, a rough image, that shows kind of my long-term vision. I would like to replace what is currently there. There's a screened in porch that's not historically appropriate, so I would like to down the road. This is not part of this application, but a future application. I would like to replace it with something that's historically accurate, that you know, is more in the carpenter Gothic style. But I really wanted to show this to you because it includes the proposed carriage house. It's, it sort of brings to life what's in the plans that you have in your hands. And so this is the proposed carriage house that, that I'm bringing to you. It's something that I would like to live in myself. That's, that's my plan and goal. And oops, and as you can see, the schoolhouse is centered on the property. It's, it's on a double lot and it's the only building on the street that is set back 50 feet. The, the building lot is 14,500 square feet. And how it is sited on the property is also part of its specialness. You know, you can't do anything in the front and you really wouldn't want to. And my goal is to preserve it as a one-room schoolhouse and not to replace it with a larger house. The property was never designed as a residence. And there are a few remaining properties like this in Rhinebeck that were not built as residents, but have been repurposed at such, as such. So, so the laws as they're written don't, don't apply to this unique scenario, which is why, you know, variants or variances are so important, which is why I'm hoping you will, you know, consider our proposal. The carriage house, as it's been conceived, will be unobtrusive and will fit with the character of the existing schoolhouse and also with the neighborhood. And I'd like to turn this over to Christie and she can bring up the plans and we can go through any questions that you have and talk through it in a little bit more detail.
To whom is it that you're turning it over?
To Christie Ballesi, my architect, who. So maybe I should unshare the screen. Let me just do that real quick.
I think Ryan, you can share the document that everyone.
Oh, okay.
I'm guessing, and if Ryan can tell me if that's, if you'd rather me share it, but probably Ryan has it right there to share. Yes?
Give me one minute.
If, if not, I can, if, whatever's easier for you.
Um, if you can queue it up, cause I have queued up before it, the letters of support. So if you can queue, queue it up quick Christie, that'd be great.
Thank you. And did the members of the board receive the letters of support from the neighboring properties?
Yes, they were circulated to the board.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, I believe I'm sharing my screen, am I?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So this is the document, oh, actually, I guess maybe you guys didn't get a version of this. There was a oversight or something that you haven't been given a copy of this.
It looks like there's a question.
Yes?
I have a question. I received and read three letters, I think, of support. When we met on the site the other day, he said you were expecting a letter from the neighbor immediately to the south.
Yes.
Did you receive that and has that been submitted?
I have not received that yet.
Okay, thank you.
I received a verbal approval, but I haven't received anything in writing yet.
Okay.
You want to go with them with your, what you were saying about the schemes in front of us?
Okay, so you can see this, the site plan on the side here. I can't seem to slide over, I can only slide up and down, I don't know why. But hopefully you can, you can see most of it. The, the current building is sort of situated right in the middle of a very large lot compared to the other lots on the street. And most of the other houses on the street are very close to the sidewalk line, where this houses or this building is set much further back. It is a .3 acre lot, so it's, it's got a lot of space. Currently has a small one-car garage with a shed attached to the back of it here. And that would be removed and we would be proposed on our new carriage house to be sort of in the same location. It's in the back corner of the property. It is meeting the side yard and the rear yard setback, so we don't need any, we're not asking for any variances in that regard. It's a largish footprint because we are really working hard to follow the residential guidelines of cars being behind the prop, behind the primary structure. I know that because this is so far back, the majority of the driveway would be parking in front of the front line of the structure. So, and we, we wanted to have two cars that could be even hidden away behind doors. And then the third car, because we will, if we have a primary dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit, our requirement is for three cars. So two of them would be provided within the carriage house and then one would be provided outside. My, my crazy dashed lines here were trying to approximate a car backing out because we, I was trying to figure out how much to tilt my building to make this work better. So the, that's the placement. The placement is meant to be very unobtrusive. It's hardly really visible from the street. There's a rise here, so when you're standing out here, it's quite far back, kind of up over a rise. The building is designed to try to minimize its size visually because we do realize it is larger than it is supposed to be by zoning. We're in a bit of a catch-22 situation here because the zoning requirement states percentages of primary structure for accessory structure and percentages of primary dwelling unit to accessory dwelling unit. And it, because this building was not built as a home, it was built as a schoolhouse. And it's extremely unique. And so the zoning code really isn't created for this sort of situation because if a, if we were to try to meet those percentage requirements, our accessory structure would then be too small to be allowable by zoning because our accessory structure would be less than the required 400 square feet for a dwelling unit. So it's a, it's a in-between stage, a funny in-between place where it seems like this is why variances exist. So some of the things we're doing to minimize the impact of the structure is its placement on the site. It's dark color, which will help it recess that. We have a front part with a roof that goes across the carriage doors such that these, the second floor is actually recessed further back. You'll see the, the garage is further forward than the apartment upstairs. So that will help the building step back and also minimize its size. We're also doing smaller than eight-foot walls on the second floor. And that's to make it shorter, although we're nowhere near the building height maximum allowable, nowhere near. And we're doing a lot of, you know, traditional architectural details, like the cornice returns and, and the carriage house doors and traditional clavering siding, things that really will help it fit in with this historic neighborhood. For the floor plan, the, the footprint on the ground level is mostly garage. And like I said, that's because we want to be able to hide two of the three cars. The apartment would actually be entered from the side under a covered porch. And then so there's a small entryway. There is a first floor bedroom and bathroom. This was important to my client Pamela because she wants to be able to have her mother be able to come to visit and be able to have an accessible bedroom in case that ever became necessary. Majority of the apartment, however, is upstairs, so one would go upstairs. And we made a conscious decision to have interior stairs as opposed to exterior stairs that came up the outside of the building, which I know could have minimized our footprint if we were doing exterior stairs. But we felt like it so much more, the building can be more beautiful without those exterior deck-type stairs. So when you do come upstairs, it's basically an open kitchen, living, dining, and then a bedroom and a bathroom in the back with some storage and stuff. So it's fairly modest in terms of a grown couple living in there. It's, it's a little under 750 square feet, 744 square feet is the accessory dwelling unit floor area. And we really worked to minimize it, but also to give Pamela what she needs to be able to live in it. So the, the thing we're asking for is the fact that we know its footprint size is larger than the 75% rule of what the footprint of this building is. It's, and then the, the accessory dwelling unit is supposed to be only 25%. That's the one that's really impossible. That's the one that's not possible at all. Because then the apartment wouldn't meet zoning, it would be too small to be habitable. So that's the one that's, that's the really sticking factor. And that is what we're here to ask for. We have a positive declaration from the planning board. We really feel like this is really a unique situation. This is a unique historic structure. It's a contributing factor to the historic designations. It's a contributing factor to the village and the neighborhood and the street. And we don't want to take away from any of that. We're trying to do something that's as unobtrusive as possible, but a livable place for Pamela to be in.
Thank you very much. And I think another point that the planning board made, we had to do with the relative height of the house itself and the building you proposed from the street level.
Yeah, because of the lay of the land, this building is sort of up a rise. And it's Pamela, Pamela's partner's daughter made that neat rendering that sort of showed how it was sort of up there behind. And that's, that's a rough rendering. I, I would think it's a little even more hidden because you can see how far it is behind our building even. So it's, it really is sort of hidden up there.
Are there other questions from the board, members of the board? If not, I don't know whether we have any. Yes?
I have a question, sir.
Okay, sure.
Now, is there a, is there any rule about a person living on the property? Is, is Pamela intending to live there? And does that make a difference about approval? And maybe that's a question for John.
Yeah, that is a requirement, Larry, that the, if you're gonna have an accessory dwelling unit, the property needs to be owner occupied.
And is there anything that says that the owner is either in the accessory structure or in the main building?
Yes, yes, that is what it says, that they could, they have to live in one or the other.
Right.
Oh, one or the other is.
Yeah, one or the other.
Yeah. Yeah, and this, this would be owner occupied.
Yes.
So what happens in five years when you move to the mansion on the hill? I'm not, I'm not sure Pamela, this is a question for you. It's really a question for Colton and for John. The, I'm all for this applicant. Colton and I went over and looked at the building. I think the design is very good. My question is only in a technical category. This, this meets John Clark's idea, the infill, meaning that he wants to get, as he is proposing, John Clark, our former planning board chairman, he's proposing that we have as many structures like this in the village as possible. My question comes back to how long does Pamela live there and is she obliged to keep, even if she does move to the castle on the hill, is she obliged to keep her residence on this property, so?
Well, what'll happen, I think Larry, at some point, and it's, I believe it's in the making, but they're expanding the historic district. So once that's codified, I believe any changes would have to go for a site plan approval. You know, conditions may be applied. Are you concerned about maybe a future property owner wanting to do something with the schoolhouse or something like that? Is that what you're referring to?
No, I was just trying to understand the rule. I, I have thought that the rule required the owner of the property to live on the property. Now, there are plenty of properties in Rhinebeck that the owner does not live there. I'm just trying to understand if Pamela intends to live there. Obviously then this is an asset for the village and no problem.
I can, I can read it as right here. It's under accessory dwelling units, part C, part three. It says owner occupancy is required where a special permit has been granted for an accessory dwelling unit to a single-family home. The owner shall reside in at least one of the two dwelling units on the lot for at least six months of the year. That's what it says. How, I think maybe what your question might be is how would this be enforced? That's what I wonder, but that is what it says here.
Yeah, and we struggle with the enforcement end of it. You know, it's easier for us to enforce the use of a short-term rental. You know, a short-term rental requires an application. It requires a annual inspection. It allows my department to kind of monitor the situation and making sure that it's, the use is compliant. In, in this particular case, it's a lot harder. You know, unless there had been complaints, there's really no way for us to really know. You know, you know, the code is the code. And like I said, if something comes across our desk saying that, you know, the owner lives in Europe and nobody's there and we investigate it and bring enough facts beyond a reasonable doubt, then, then we can enforce the situation. But other than that, it's, you're on the honor system. You know, so.
Well, I think we live in an honorable village. Speaking of which, I don't know that we have any, Ryan, do we have anybody in general, from the general public who is joining us? Or do we just have the comments we've already been supplied with? Ryan, oh, well.
I think you gotta give Ryan a little, he's monitoring the, the meeting, but he, I don't know if he, let's see, hopefully. Are you on Ryan? Sorry about that, sorry. I muted myself twice. Sorry about that. So there is no one in the waiting room, no, no neighbor is here, I believe. For the purposes of this meeting, we only have the three letters of support.
Yes, and I'm glad that we, we have those. I, we therefore do not need to move to open this hearing to the public. Therefore, we don't have to move to close it. So let's hear from other members of the board, any other questions at this point that, yes, Christopher?
Small question, I'd like some resolution on, off perhaps the main topic. I see that since this was brought before the planning board, you know, you, as you've explained, you've carefully moved the new structure so that it does not interfere with the side or rear lot line, which is commendable. And the only question I have there is about the balcony in the back. Let's see, I don't know why that should be allowable. Maybe I'm misreading the code, but.
Balconies, balconies are allowed, yeah, John, you can say it, right? Balconies are allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven feet into the, there, into the setback.
Yeah, there's, there's a list of protrusions and, and structures that are exempt from requiring a variance. And a balcony, I believe, is one of them.
I've searched for that and I found eaves and porches and things like that, but not balconies. So I just wanted some reassurance on that.
The experience I have is the balcony does have to conform.
The screened sun porch, is that counted as part of it, John?
The screened front porch.
Whatever in that original plan that we saw that was on the side that the owner said she was going to do something with later or whatever.
And so Judy, you asked if that was part of the calculation? Christie, I, I don't, you know, I think with respect to the calculations, and Christie and I, you know, we struggled with this back and forth, trying to figure out what, what's countable, what's not countable. But I believe that if you minus out, if you included the entire house and you minus out the items that we weren't sure, I think the numbers were so miniscule that it really, really didn't add up to much of a difference with respect to square footage, right? I'm thinking less than, less, less than 100 square feet, if that.
Right, yeah, I mean, the whole structure, first floor and second floor is only 1,008 square feet, so.
Right, and that, and that was, that was gross, I believe, right?
Yeah.
The way we, and, and just for the future, just to let everybody know, I'm gonna get a little bit more clarity on this, so we don't have to struggle with this down the road. But, but is that what you're asking Judy?
Yeah, so there's no way that 80% gets decreased, right? Because I'm having a major problem with that 80%. It's setting, it's going to set a very bad precedent for the village. So I'm just wondering, is there some way to decrease that number?
Can I, can I speak to that a little bit? Um, I, I understand your concern. And I, even if I made the apartment be a one, be a studio without any bedrooms, it still would look terrible on paper. It's still gonna be 70% instead of 80%. But what I would like to say is that I don't think this needs to set a precedent because this is not, this isn't the house. This was built as a one-room schoolhouse. It's such a unique, unique situation. It's very, very small size and it's very, very large lot. And it's, and it's 50 feet back from the road, whereas everything else is right up on the sidewalk. There's so many things about it that make it so different than another house where someone might come in and say, my house is small, but I want to make a giant accessory dwelling unit. Because I, I feel like in your resolution, you could actually stress that this is not a residence, but was, it was not built as a residence, but rather it was built as a schoolhouse. And therefore, because of that, because of its historic designation, you're allowing this. That, that would just be my, my hope is that, because I don't want to set a precedent that things can balloon out of control. And I understand that would be one of your concerns. So that, that was just one way I thought about was in the resolution sort of. And I think the planning board alluded to this, that making a point that this is really a unique case. This is really a contributing factor to the historic designation of this.
Well, you know, that would actually.
Well, you know, that would actually require us going around the village, looking at all the unique properties to try to make a differentiation that if, in a court of law we were taken to, to declare that we weren't being arbitrary and capricious. So that's my concern about how we could actually differentiate uh, this particular house. And the other thing with the 80% is, is that, what's to stop? Once we set that precedent, what's to stop somebody with a 3,000 square foot house, primary house?
Well, I think what might be.
There's limitations, well, right, Colton, but there's also limitations, I mean, the maximum um, is allowed is 750. So regardless of somebody else's house, 750 square feet is the maximum they're able to build this accessory unit. The only thing, Judy, and I understand your position, but what's gonna support your, uh, the board's um, final, um, you know, uh, result is, is the, the, um, the minutes, you know, the um, the resolution. The resolution's gonna basically state, you know, you're not just arbitrarily, you know, approving this, you know, based off of the, the, the fact that uh, it's a schoolhouse, it wasn't designed as a r- normal residence. Um, and you know, these, all these um, facts are, are in your final resolution. So say down the road, you have another applicant want to basically receive the same approvals. You know, we're gonna pull out, you know, case history, you know, that, the board has the authority to pull out any old case and say, well, according to our past practice, this is the reason why we allowed 80%.
I was gonna suggest, John, that uh, if this were the direction that we were headed, there would be no reason why we shouldn't have a condition uh, in our own records about this property.
Yeah.
Explains the, uh, the, the things that couldn't be done otherwise because of its historic placement and uh, utility.
Right.
I often shut up people this way, I'm sorry.
I mean, that's, that's to the point, and Claire, so.
By the way, if you want me to stop sharing my screen, I can do that, I, I just realized I'm still sharing my screen. Should I stop?
Well, I think it's, it's useful.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I do too, thank you.
I think at this point.
I have a, just a question, I said, the, the, the difference in footprint is not that great.
Right, right, and we're still nowhere near.
And I, I'm not sure that your footprint for the prime resident is actually big enough in the sense that I did take the trouble to scale the site map up as best as I could so that the largest line I could find was exactly right on my architectural scale. And when I then measured the footprint of the house, I found it was, you know, about 50, 75 foot square feet bigger than what it is said to be here. I understand from talking to you um, that you just took these numbers from a Dutchess county.
From the property card, yeah, that I just took the numbers for the existing primary structure from the property card, so it, it's, honestly, it's possible my mon, my numbers could be too small, which wouldn't that be neat, that um, that it's, it's not as bad as it sounds? But yeah, I did not, I just took them from the um, from the parcel access property card.
And so it might be worthwhile to measure it, you know, it's a risk, it might be smaller. As it's drawn, and this was drawn by a surveyor, it seems to be slightly bigger. Very slightly, but it might help that percentage. And I was wondering if, you know, you might give the plan one more working through to see if there's some way you can shrink the footprint, I don't think.
John's point, or I think that even, even if the building is a slightly different size, it's, it's not gonna make it that much different. It's still, I will use zoning board words, we're still asking for a substantial variance, even if I.
Even on the footprint?
Well, um, right now we're 94% instead of 75%. It, maybe we could get it down to 90 if I redid the math, redid or measured the building, but I don't see it going much below 85 or 90, right? I mean, it's still gonna be, it's still gonna be, and, and because 63% of that is the garage, is the, is the, my, my two-car garage. That's almost the whole, that, that makes almost the whole footprint size. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think one of the things that uh, I, I think about, what I thought about when I was there and when I looked at your drawings, uh, was um, the fact that the, I don't know how old the garage is, but it's been there a long while, the house's been there much longer. And um, it's, it doesn't seem to me that what you're proposing violates something like it would violate something that was much closer to the sidewalk or something that had much more age-old land around it. But there are, there are the limitations of the code. I think I would um, encourage any members of the board who thought it was appropriate to um, take us in some direction with a motion. Are there other questions?
I actually have a, a few comments. The, I looked up the 2018 I R, uh, I R C, International Bedding Code, I'm sorry, it's not the I R C, I B C. It says, the floor area within the, the gross floor area, this is the definition of gross floor area. Okay, and I know we're talking about a net. The gross floor area is the floor area within, with, within the inside perimeter of the exterior walls of the building under consideration, exclusive of vent shafts and quartz, without deduction for corridors, stairways, ramps, closets, the thickness of interior walls, columns, or other features. There is a definition of net, it didn't drop out, things like bathroom, and when you get to inhabitable, inhabited area, those things do drop out, but even when you go to net floor area, they don't.
Actually, they do, the, the definition of net is the actual occupied area, not including unoccupied accessory areas such as corridors, stairways, ramps, toilet rooms, mechanical rooms, and closets.
Okay.
Right.
That's from the 2020 Building Code of New York State. So um, I think that this question has probably come up, so I think they've um, elaborate, you know, uh, detailed it a little bit more. But yeah, John and I talked a lot about this.
Okay, well, I'd like to say a couple of other things, so the Rhinebeck Code does talk about floor area. It doesn't talk about gross, doesn't talk about net. And I thought one of the principle, well, I do know that a principle in zoning code is anytime there's any ambiguity in a term, you always have to interpret it in the most strict manner. So if we followed that principle, floor area is gross floor area. Gross floor area of this building is 1,100 square feet. I think if you rented it, you'd rent it as an 1,100 square foot apartment. Uh, I just think the, I, I think this is an 1,100 square foot accessory dwelling by the kind of well, I think, I, I think that would be the right interpretation of the code. And I think also when we look at a variance, we should look at what is the minimum variance that should be granted to take care of a hardship. So in this case, we're saying, well, gosh, the main structure is historical, it's small. So if we uh, you know, apply this code, well, you, you can't even get to the 400 square feet. Well, I don't know how we go from there to say, okay, well, we couldn't, you know, it really should be on the order of 390 square feet. So, gosh, it's supposed to be 400, let's throw that out, and now let's go to the max. That, I have a problem with that, and I would love to to have an avenue to say, I mean, I think this is a really nice design. I don't really find anything objectionable about it, but I do think it sets this precedent that is extremely problematic. And uh, I actually know of at least one case in the village where it was interpreted as gross and a variance, well, a variance wasn't sought, but planning wouldn't let it go. I mean, this just seems so far, so far outside of what the code allows. And the historical argument, I think, is very good, except that there is no way to enforce that there would be, this building would be treated as a historical building going forward. There's no, we don't have, uh, I think Colton mentioned that, well, maybe we could put some conditions about, you know, how the historical structure uh, could be treated, and, and indeed you can do that. There, there are other states uh, where you can do that, but that's a very large body uh, of law that allows you to do that.
But Kevin, if uh, uh, we were to approve uh, the design, the, the plans that lay before us, uh, and uh, if, if our precedent that is a matter of some concern had within it the conditions that caused this, in this, in this circumstance, to um, do what we did if we were to approve this, that would pretty well take care of us as a precedent that could be pointed to for something much more careless and uh, with much less historic importance about, about a building that's actually sitting in the middle of the property. So it isn't that, uh, I think it'd be a, a precedent that would be applied to a whole lot of the circumstances that we all would worry about for uh, violation of this particular part of the code.
Well, what, what would that be, would we say, any building that predates 1850? I mean, what is?
No, no, I, I wouldn't think that we could, we could do a uh, a specialty code, but were the violation of the, the code as it's written to be proposed, and uh, the decision to allow this to go forward were pointed to as a precedent, well, that would mean everybody would have to take a look at exactly what this board said. And if this board said something that was not applicable to just any other uh, attempt to uh, take up more space than the code allows, I don't think that the precedent would be effective.
Well, the, the argument is that it's a historic structure, is that the argument?
I, I think the argument is that it's an adaptive reuse. It was never built as a home. So be the, it's, it's, we're built as a one-room schoolhouse, and it will be on the historic register as a historic contributing factor. But I think the main point is that the zoning code was not created for this sort of situation. The zoning code was created for, you know, a 2,500 square foot house that wants to have an accessory apartment, and so that accessory apartment is, is secondary to that house, uh, but this was not built as a house. This was, this is an adaptive reuse that was a schoolhouse.
Okay, so I don't know if we have it, but any accessory building that became a residential building, the precedence would be then they could build a much larger structure on that property, because originally it wasn't a house.
No, I mean, there, there's limitations that are already set in the code. So um, you know, regardless of what somebody wants to do down the road, you, like I said, you, you know, 750 square feet is the maximum. And we've had previous cases with accessory apartments needing to be legalized, and you know, a lot of times, each case is different. Especially this case, you know, we don't have anything similar to this uh, that I'm aware of. So it's not like you're, guys are breaking or going way out of the box, making a decision. This is, this is a u- unique case, um, the, you know, it's not a self-created hardship. A lot of these variances in the past have been self-created hardships, you know what I mean? This is not that particular case, so um, you gotta, you gotta look at the big picture. You can't, and you can't um, you know, speculate down the road, you know, let's look at the facts, let's look at what you got, and then deal with what is in front of us, you know, down the road is something that, you know, it's impossible to.
We do have, I think we do have to look at what's going to happen down the road. I think that's part of our job as ZBA to look at the changes we're making for people who come before us and how it will impact people looking to make changes in the future. So we do have to always be cognizant of the decisions that we make will have future impact. And while we may not have another tiny schoolhouse that will come before us, we could have built like the electrical building down near Hogs Bridge. What if they want to, that was never a house, that was an electric company. And should they now look at what we do, should this be approved, decide they want an accessory dwelling? Now, they come before us and we say, well, no, we approved, that one was a schoolhouse. And they, they can say legitimately, well, we weren't a house, we an electrical building. So, deny them, they can take us to court, and we could not prove that we weren't being arbitrary and capricious. But we always have to be cognizant of these things.
Okay, and that, and I agree with that, but you gotta keep in mind also that going back to the limitations, you know, uh, the maximum square footage of an, so you're saying that they can argue the fact that, okay, well, you approved 80% of this house's gross, whatever you want to classify it, square footage, and, but the thing is, we, you guys still allowed a structure to be less than what the maximum was, is, which is 750, you're allowing 744. Now, in this particular case, if this electric company decides to do it, and he wants to go off of the 80% rule, and now his accessory unit is 980 square feet, well, that's, that's a little bit different. You know, I mean, like, you know, I, I think, I think the law is in your favor, um, and, and you have, you know, of course, anybody can Article 78 any decision. I mean, that's everybody's right, but the thing is, I don't know if it would last in court, and, you know, are, are you that far, are you really that concerned?
I am concerned, because like I said before, this is setting a really bad precedent. Look at what's happening all around these little small towns uh, because of the COVID. People with max means are rushing, buying the tiniest house on big lots, and what are they doing? Why are they doing this? Okay, it doesn't matter how small the lot is, because they have the finances to build bigger to accommodate their families, whether it's an old mother, or whether it's 10 children, or whatever, or building a little schoolhouse for their children because they can't go to school because of COVID. And we do have to take into consideration the environmental factors that are impacting our small villages and towns, and we have to be careful, we're the ZBA. We must be cognizant of all aspects of what's happening with the particular properties and our environment. That's how I'm looking at this, and that's what scares me about this 80%.
And if it was 75%?
Well, to the extent that they can get this lower, I would be more willing to go along with it, but 80%, no. I cannot, sitting here right now, I do not feel comfortable with the 80% because I can foresee the impact this will have on the village. And while it may not change the look of Oak Street cumulatively, it will change the look and feel of our village. And the ZBA, as well as the planning board, we have an obligation to protect the village and its residents. And while nobody may be opposing this in the public. And while nobody may be opposing this in the public. We still, that's our job is to protect the village and the residents. To make the village habitable for all. And while this is a beautiful design, yes, but it's eighty percent. So if you could work to decrease this, I would be more amenable to listening to a different proposal. But as of now, eighty percent, I can't do that.
Can I speak? The, I would say the reason it's eighty percent is because the primary structure is so small. So these other possible things you're talking about. A large building would never be able to make a accessory structure that's eighty percent. Because it would be over seven hundred and fifty. Their accessory dwelling unit is required to be between four hundred and seven hundred and fifty square.
But there are smaller houses here in the village, very small houses, maybe not that small. But what, twelve hundred square feet, thirteen hundred square feet? There are small properties here.
Yeah, and then I think, I guess I feel like a small property should be able to make an accessory dwelling unit that's livable. You know, it's that, it's that infill, infill sort of. Zoning so that, to, to, to make it a livable, walkable village for more people, but.
Code was recently redone. And the code committee looked at every aspect of the code. So if they felt that it was a problem, they could have solved that problem by making it a change. And they did not.
I would like to say a little bit more. Judy, my concern, all of you, is, is not exactly what the impact to the village would be. It's more how, what exactly? How do we frame it? Such that. We don't approve pretty much any variance coming in front of us. I want to just frame it naryally enough. So that it isn't something that. Well, for myself. I, I read the code and I, I can't get there. And I see there is a hardship. But I, I, we have to define that hardship carefully enough. And I, I guess I would like somebody on the board. To state, you know, how, what are the conditions that would? That we would quote to allow this variance? What are those? I need to hear them again.
That would need to be in any affirmative motion that anybody made. And I'm not necessarily hearing any at this point.
I mean, I, I want to be clear, I don't really oppose this. I, I'm trying to find that, I'd like a way to approve it. That doesn't kind of open the door for anything and everything.
I'm not quite there yet, but another way to look at this perhaps is if we were to disapprove it. Would the current owner still want to maintain this property? I don't know, she could perhaps say, you know, I can't do what I want to do, I'm going to sell it. She sells it and the next person comes along, shall we say, only next year. And puts an application to demolish this building, which is not protected at present. It's unlikely to be protected before, probably about the middle of next year. I would think. So we could lose an historic building. Because I'm not sure that there's particular. Protection in place for a nonhistoric building or a building not in an historic district. If somebody wants to demolish it and build a new building. Could you listen to that, Little John? There's something I'd like to know what protections there are.
But that's happened quite a bit, actually, in the village. Much more historical homes have been destroyed in the historic district that haven't been protected. Because of. Variances that have been granted, so I think that we do need to be careful. And it, it's unfortunate, it is unfortunate from my perspective. I'm trying to be as generous as I can, it's a beautiful design. It's just unfortunate that it's. Such a small primary dwelling. I mean, I can't say more than that, I can't, I cannot even think of a way around this. Unless you're willing to go back to the drawing board. And if you can't go back to the drawing board, then I, from my perspective, I don't see any way forward for myself. My colleagues obviously feel differently, but.
So, yeah, I mean, there's no way that you can build any accessory building on this. Lot with this existing house and meet the code.
There's no way you could build an accessory dwelling unit, that's true.
You know, so that seems something that is wrong with the code.
Yeah.
When it comes down to this particular case, we don't want to change the whole code. So we have to define this as a very unique situation.
One way.
As I said earlier, would be part of it's, of it's being a precedent. It would be a precedent of this sort. And therefore could be instructive in the future just as well. As it could be seen as a, some kind of mistake. Because I don't think it really would be. But we, we don't hang around hundreds of years making sure we aren't going to be precedents, so.
John, I have a question, is there some other way they can get this approved? As, instead of going through us, could they appeal to the Board of Trustees?
No, unfortunately, they could not, I mean, this is the final, this is the Alamo right here. So it's the ZBA makes the final decision. The, the only thing that the village board could do is change the code. But they have no intention on doing that and that takes, that'll take so long to even. Happen, so, but going back, what Christopher, you asked earlier was, you know. There isn't anything right now in the code that would prevent them from requesting to demolish the house and start from scratch. It's not protected by any historic overlay. So as of right now, it's vulnerable, the property. But with that being said, you know, Judy, it really isn't, I know, it is a unique situation, you know. I understand your position. I just, you know, I don't know, I mean, there's, there were some suggestions from the planning board, maybe making the house larger. Connecting it, a single, you know, just expanding the footprint and build an addition off the house. There, there had been some semi-guidance from John Clark. But. That's where we're at.
I think one of the.
Remind the zoning board that we have a positive declaration from the planning board, if that, if that. I think, I feel like that stands for something. We did modify the design in order to get that positive declaration from the planning board. We did, we did make changes based on their input. To, before we brought it to you. Because they also did not, you know, they, they, they wanted to, us to. Make it smaller, they, originally we were asking for side yard variance, they thought that that was not. Necessary, so we really have worked. To, to try to make it. To try, we've tried to work with the boards, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I knew I should have brought my gavel to the meeting. It might have frightened Judy's horse or something, but. I would call now. For a motion to be advanced by one of the members of the ZBA. And see if it is seconded and then see what. Our opinion is.
Colton, can we pick up a little question that I'm wondering about before we go plow ahead with that? If you.
I can't quite, speak up Larry, it's not quite good yet.
Well, I have a, I have a question that I would just like a little review on. All right, so can you hear me? Can I go ahead with that?
Go ahead.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
All right, well, if you look at the survey of the property. And you look at the back of the new proposed apartment garage. Sticking off the back is the deck, which we discussed very briefly. That's seen also in the west elevation. It's a, it's a little porch on the back or a deck, really. And my question is, does, does Mr. Pema, I think that's his name, right? Mr. Fenton, is that correct? Is his name?
Are you talking about the architect?
No, I'm talking about the neighbor to the west.
Oh, I don't know, I, I don't know, Christie, can you see that?
That is, that is the name that's written on the survey to.
A little bit, Christie, so we can see, yes, okay. So, looking at this drawing. The, what are you calling it, Christie, this back, calling it a deck?
It's, we called it a balcony, but yeah, you could call it a deck, it's just on the second floor, but it, so yeah.
It doesn't have a roof.
No.
Deck, now, on my paperwork, I'm sure, says what the offset is to the yard. And my question is, does John Pema, if that's still the owner. Does he realize that this building is going to come within something like five feet of his property? And has he said nothing?
That property is a, is a many, many acre estate with, yeah, yeah.
And he has much more stake. Than this applicant.
There's a lot of trees.
There's a screen of trees behind the.
Yes, it is, but I don't think they're, I don't think that they're evergreen trees. I think that this balcony is going to be a pretty clear view of his house. And I don't have a problem with it, but I wonder. Has this person, John Pema, has he seen where this balcony is going to go? You know, the, I only have two questions with this, I don't have the same concern as my colleagues. My concern is, is Pamela going to live there? And does the near neighbor realize that this balcony is going to be overlooking the deciduous hedge? And looking at his yard? And that's fine, as long as the guy is not surprised by this. Has, Christie, can you say, or Pamela, can either of you say?
So I, I, that's a great question and I have not approached him because the trees provide such a screen. It didn't seem like it would, you know, kind of interfere with his view shed. And we can certainly plant screens there as well. So he, I, I have not approached him about that. And, and I do, you know, I do plan on living in, you know, this, I'm designing this for. Me to live in, you know, for the long term.
There was a mail, I would assume, so that all the, all the adjacent neighbors received mailing about the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean. As long as he reads his mail, he's been notified, but that's.
Sight is really good, this is, this is a very nice plan, but that balcony is, is. Very hard to read, well, certainly on a, on a.
It's a very, yeah, it's a very light gray line, you're right.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not faulting any part of this. I'm, I'll go back to what it is and I'm concerned about. Does the man realize that there's going to be sort of a second story viewing platform to his rather nice lawn? Now, if John can help us with this and say, well, he doesn't have a choice. Then.
Um, I, I mean, I, I recall meetings where, you know, you don't have to make a decision tonight. But the thing is, if you want to provide more research. If, if you want the applicant maybe to get something in writing from John. Pema and, and maybe some type of response, may, if the board wants me and Christie to go back out. And maybe measure, you know, every single portion of that house and get a really, really accurate. Calculations, I mean, we can do that and then adjourn it.
It wouldn't be. It wouldn't be extensive measuring, it would be setting two stakes. At the outer edge, the westerly edge of this balcony, that would be what it is and.
No, no, right, no, I understand that, I'm talking about, like, you know, I know that Chris said earlier, you know. Maybe the, maybe the measurements haven't been a hundred percent accurate, it could have been off a tad. I mean, we can, I can go back with the design professional and actually. Verify the entire square footage, maybe get. The state to chime in on exactly what's considered net and gross square footage. Maybe tighten up the numbers or at least get them a little bit more accurate and then.
May I propose? Us, that there be some motion on behalf of the board for something such as John's is suggesting. If that would make it better for. All of us to make a better decision. The question before us is not about the balcony. It's about the, the inability of the present proposal to meet entirely different code. But if you think that, listening to John talk, there is something that the board could insist on. Further study and reporting of. That would at least allow us to go home, we are home, so. Doesn't make that much difference, but I haven't had supper either, but the. The intention from the planning board was to approve their positive decision. Or not. Because we represent the zoning code itself. We've talked a lot about. What, some of the reasons why the proposed structure is across the line. But it may be that we aren't able to decide something tonight, except that. We would need to have another submission. That would probably have to go through the planning board again. That would address some of the concerns that Judy's expressed and some of the. Issue that Larry brought up. But I can't do anything except wish I had a gavel because somebody's got to make a proposal here. And someone's got a second bit and we've got to see what our thoughts are at this hour. And then if necessary. Keep the thing in the air until a planning board and a zoning board. Can come to a positive conclusion.
I'll make a motion, my motion is, if I'm allowed to make it, is that. This is sent back to the planning board to hash this out a bit, especially with the balcony part of it. Because they, the planning board would be the one to deal with the balcony issue. Even were we tonight to approve it. But, so I think we should send it back to them and they can hash it out. Maybe they can whittle it down, down a little bit so that the entire ZBA is on board with this.
Is there a second to that motion? It's been suggested as a motion that the planning board be asked to look at this again. And to take into consideration the balcony. The reason it came to us from the planning board had not to. The reason it came to us from the planning board had not to do with the balcony, but had to do with the amount of space that the new structure would take on the amount of land that is available to it. If there's no second, unless there is, I'm afraid I'd have to ask for some other conclusion. We could send it back to the planning board and let them wrestle with it more, but they did come up
I certainly don't think we should send it back to the planning board to focus on the balcony. I'm sorry, perhaps that I, in the first place, but balcony is something used in the summertime. So I think the argument about evergreen trees is a bit beside the point.
You know, my
I've been assured that this is allowed under the zoning code.
Yeah, my, my concern really is the definition of floor area.
Yeah.
I think I, I think I can totally get, you know, understand the hardship and be on board with it. But I would, you know, pretty much on board with it. I guess I do still question the size. And this isn't what was put to us, but there is a solution here. It can be a two-family. I, I think you could almost, you could almost get the same result, I think, just with a little bit more design. I don't know why the buildings couldn't be connected, but I'm sure there is some reason, but I don't, it's escaping me.
It's a historically significant structure that I don't think we want to alter. And I'm positive Pamela does not want to.
Yeah, when I looked at that historical structure, you know, the backside, I mean, I can, I can imagine something coming off the backside that would be fairly inobtrusive. You know, I guess that would be maybe somewhat against the historical preservation principle.
Yeah.
Well, as someone who lived for 40 years in one of the great Reinbeck houses and then saw it gutted, I would like to say that comparing these or combining these two considerations, balcony and the percentage of ground that's covered with the new plan, seems to me not resolvable by attaching something to the back of a building that's even older than the house I spent 40 years in.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying, you know, that would be a way they could alleviate it, but I don't know that it's desirable.
I, I think it would change the appearance of the historic structure from the street. Unless you make it a
Well, actually, it would be behind the, it'd be behind the school, but I, again, you know, nobody, the owner doesn't want to do that and it, it's just a bit, it's a very, very big ask. It's a, it's exceeding the code substantially. And anything that can be done to be, to brought it in, bring it in, I think is, should be looked at. And again, I would, I am concerned, you know, again, about the definitions of floor area.
Can I ask John a little bit about that? I mean, given that the minimum accessory dwelling unit under the zoning code is, I think, 400 square feet, is that an indication of whether it was intended to be reckoned as gross or net? Because if it's gross, that's a pretty tiny
That's true. That's exactly right, you know, and it's, it's not a well-written code. But nevertheless, it's what we're stuck with. So, you know, there had been, you know, there's other ways of going about this, and this had been suggested by the planning board that, you know, even John Clark, who is a seasoned planner, said, you know, why don't you connect the two with a breezeway? And, and then, then you consider the two family and then you have no limitations with respect to square footage.
So That's, that's actually what I was meaning. That's what I was imagining is that coming off the back of the building, just to breathe.
Right, right. And that had been a suggestion, but you know, again, you know, I believe that the applicant's trying to stick with the character and, and within limits, but so this is the route she took and
And I think members of the planning board also objected to the idea of a breezeway. They wanted, said that they would want it to be something much more substantial and to have the buildings actually connected, if I remember correctly.
Well, it'd be nice not to touch that historical building, no doubt about that. But I think what everybody probably would like, the planning board and I can't, well, for myself, if you were proposing something that was a 400 square foot accessory dwelling, I think it would be like really easy. It's, it's because of the size.
Kevin, are you willing to propose a motion along the lines that you're following now?
No, I'm not, because I really, I really, I guess my overall feeling is I'm supportive of this. But it's, I just wish somebody could frame it in such a way that it doesn't, it's like, you know
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to point out, just for the, the numbers, the net first floor area is 199 square feet. So this part here is about 200 square feet. So double that would be a 400 square foot, the, the size you're saying you would like us to make it.
Right, you know, Christie, go ahead.
And we're not that much bigger than that. We're, you know what I'm saying?
It's, you know, you know, Christie, you could probably resolve this entire issue if you take the primary house and build a 15 by 10 mudroom on the back end of it.
No, no, the truth is, I would need to more than double the size of the primary house. Because the primary house is only 1,000 square feet. At, at 1,000 square feet, 25% of that is 250. So I would need to double the size of the primary house, make it 2,000 square feet. Then I would be able to build a 500 square foot apartment. Still, still, this is 750. The reason it's 750 is Pamela would like two bedrooms. The existing house Pamela, I don't remember if it's one bedroom or two bedrooms.
It's two, very small.
Okay, so the existing house is a two-bedroom. And this is neither here nor there, but Pamela's partner is too tall to stand in it. So they can't live there. So they're trying to make a place where they can live, where he can stand up all the way. So, you know, it's, it's, I understand every, all the concerns that have been brought up. There's, there's bedrock all in the yard, so building back here is actually not really possible. And also, we've stated, it's not desirable to us to add on to the historic structure. This is our proposal. We have made it small. You can see how my, my strikeout marks of the size it used to be. And we worked with the planning board to make it smaller. And I realize the percentages, it's still big, but that's because this building is only 1,000 square feet. Even if this building, even if we doubled it, it would still be these same issues. So my, I, I really feel like there's no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There's no adverse effect to the neighbors. This is not a self-created hardship. These are all the reasons that variances were created is for a situation like this. That's, that's the way I feel.
Somebody
One possible suggestion, trying to hesitate to bring up, this is bloody ugly. But could you reduce the footprint and therefore be complying at least one of the two by making half the garage simply a carport? Open on two sides with, John, with that
I think the carport, I think that would still be footprint, right?
Yeah, well, it has a roof over it. It would still be considered.
Christopher, are you moving that the question be sent back to the planning board and that the planning board be supplied with a model that has a more appropriate footprint for the question that brings them to the ZBA?
No, I've looked at this very carefully and I can't figure any other way to reduce this in a meaningful way that will meet the current requirements of the zoning code. And
I'd like to
I think if we send it back as it is, because the planning board is simply going to pass it again.
Well, I don't know about that. And I, I think we've, we've seen that that may be something that's fundamentally very difficult to do at all. However, I think we've, we've heard a lot of good thought and good-intentioned conversation. And it's about time for us to decide whether we can decide or whether we say we can't approve this. And we think the applicants and the planning board should come closer together with the concerns that we've discussed tonight.
I think that's a very valid motion that we should consider. I mean, you didn't make it, Colton. I'm not saying that you made it, but what you said, I think it's something that we should consider making a motion on.
The chair doesn't move.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying, I know you didn't make that as a motion, but the rest of us should consider it and make, consider making a motion based on
That wouldn't disappoint me.
Your comment.
My, my mind wandered for a second and I'm not quite sure what Colton said. Could you repeat that, Colton?
He said he would be happy if someone would make a motion.
Okay, I'll try. Given that the proposed accessory dwelling does not violate the maximum lot coverage allowed, given the considerable lot size, and recognizing that the small size of the existing building, an historic schoolhouse, is, makes it impossible to provide even the minimum size accessory building without violating the 25% floor area rule of the code. Given that the proposed garage and accessory dwelling unit is sited well at the back of the yard, partially hidden by the topography of the site, given that the owner plans to paint the building the dark color so that the building receives in relation to the existing historic structure, we propose that the plans for the accessory dwelling unit, a garage, should be approved as submitted.
You've moved that they be approved as submitted with those conditions?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Let's discuss that to the degree necessary. Are there other views to what Christopher suggested should be our conclusion?
Well, because I'm opposed to the idea of the 80%, I actually like the idea of sending it back to the planning board to rehash this a bit. And I do believe that they could, they could come to a better decision than the one we would be, maybe some of us aren't totally on board, that we would be just passing it. So that's my feeling and I'm really concerned about that. It should go back to the planning board, but so I keep with that motion.
The, sending it back to the planning board, you know, one of the things is that it was a three to two vote. So, so they also have some tension about figuring out, you know. So, you know, that's really more in their area.
We have a motion that hasn't been seconded.
It has been seconded.
It has been seconded.
It was, it was seconded.
Oh, okay.
I did second it.
And we know what the motion is?
Ryan, were you able to write it down?
Yes, I have it recorded, Christopher, what you, what your motion is, yes. And I do have the second from Larry.
Would anybody like to hear it again, just in case it's unclear or incomplete, in their opinion?
If not, all those who are in favor, say aye.
Please state, please state your name.
Christopher Tavernier, aye.
One at, one at, one at, please.
Ryan, Ryan, why don't you do a roll call?
Okay, Christopher Tavernier.
Tavernier, yes, pro.
Larry Garrick. Judy Merritt.
Against.
Kevin Curry.
Guy Epstein? I don't really want to go one way or the other.
Colton Johnson.
Pro.
The motion passes. The variance, both variances have been granted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone for a very thorough and I think in all aspects, well-intentioned discussion of what I hope will be a beautiful project.
Thank you. I completely understand. I appreciate all of your, all of your comments. Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Thanks for coming. Thanks a lot, Ryan.
Thank you, Colton.